The meeting will begin shortly. 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 The meeting will begin shortly.
Welcome, everybody, to a meeting of the Ontario City Council. In accordance with the Governor's declarations of emergency, this meeting is being conducted by teleconference to limit in-person attendance. This meeting is being live broadcast on local cable channel three as well as internet livestreamed on our city website. We appreciate your understanding during this unprecedented time of social distancing under the Governor's emergency orders. All documents for public review are on file with the Records Management City Clerk's Department. Anyone wishing to provide public comment or to address the council has been provided alternative means to do so, including US mail, email, the website comment form, as well as the ability to call in live during appropriate times of the meeting. All public comments received by this established deadline for this meeting will be included as part of the official meeting record. In accordance with state law, remarks during public comment are to be limited to subjects within council's jurisdiction. Remarks on other agenda items will be limited to those items. Our first item, our first item of business is called to order, Madam City Clerk. Sheila?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As I read each of your names, please indicate that you are here or present. Mayor Leon?
Here.
Mayor Pretend Dorse Parada?
Here.
Councilmember Wapner?
Here.
Councilmember Valencia?
Yeah.
Councilmember Bowman?
Here.
All councils are present at this meeting per case of paying via Zoom.
All right, thank you. Now for the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Wapner.
All right, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Please join me in a pledge to our great flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wapner. At this time, we usually have an invocation, but in recognition of the challenges that we're facing within our community and nation, I'm asking you to take a 15-second moment of silence with me and reflection and pause. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for your good thoughts. So we're now at the public comment portion of our meeting. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. For public comments tonight, we have zero written comments. We do have four emailed comments. One from James Hill congratulating Mayor Pretend Dorse Parada. One from Jason Lee regarding item number nine and 10 stating he's available to answer questions. One from Mr. Galliano in support of item number 11. One from Howard McGinnis in opposition of item number 12. We also have two callers who are currently on hold to speak. We will connect each caller in succession, who will be given three minutes to address the council. If any caller requires a translator, we have staff on standby to accommodate.
Yeah, I'd like to advise all of the callers that it's best if you turn down the sound and just listen on your phone for your name. And that way, we won't have this long 10-second delay in getting you connected. The other thing is, we have a pretty good-sized agenda tonight and callers, so we were going to be very, very precise on the three minutes. When you have three minutes, you'll have one minute remaining, and the City Clerk will remind you. And then, at the end of three minutes, I will just inform you that your time is up, and we'll move on to the next comment. So our first caller, Madam City Clerk.
Yes, Mayor, our first caller is Deandre Lampkin. Go ahead, Deandre.
Thank you, Mayor and members of City Council. I just want to come forward today and say that it's nice to know that tradition and community still matters in the city of Ontario. And I think after an event that we had this past weekend, the Ontario residents have made that very clear. As you guys are aware, the Ontario Convention Center, a couple of years ago, took over the responsibility of maintaining and putting up the nativity scene on Euclid as a part of the Christmas on Euclid experience. What made this year unique is that, just like all other businesses, all across the state and all across the United States, many employees have, or employers have been forced to furlough many of their employees. And in order for the nativity scenes to go up every year, they have relied on some of those employees to assist with that, whether it be by some type of stipend or some type of volunteer commitment by a few hours by nature of their employment with the Convention Center. And so when this happened this year, the Convention Center had reached out to the community and had asked if anyone was able to help fulfill some of those, some of those, or fill some of those spots that were normally needed to make sure that the nativity scenes can go up. And the Lampkin Foundation was one of those organizations that they reached out to, along with a few other people in the city. And I just want to say that I'm very proud of the work of the Lampkin Foundation and its admin support volunteers that they put forth and stepped up to help coordinate some of those resources. It started off last week or two weeks ago with the need for skilled labor. We went through our database, and we started looking at individuals who had, we have previously worked with, who had experience in carpentry. Some of those individuals did step up. We reached out to members within the community who we work with on an ongoing basis to see if they may have known anybody who may be able to assist, and they were able to help as well. And then, it culminated this week, it culminated this weekend with 33 residents from throughout the Ontario region showing up to put the last-minute touches on the nativity scene and also clean up the area to make sure that the area is safe for any of the visitors and the thousands of visitors we're expecting over the next couple of months leading up to Christmas. So I just wanted to take this time to say thank you to everyone who volunteered, everyone who stepped up. I also want to thank Deborah Parada and Katrina Delman for their leadership and being there on Saturday. And also, they also helped to coordinate the volunteers as well. Without them, there is a chance that the Christmas on Euclid experience would not have been possible without those volunteers and those Ontario residents stepping up. And just people reaching out throughout the community and wanting to work together. And especially on the heels of an election, it's nice to see that people are still willing to come together and work together to make sure that we have, look forward to.
Time has expired, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. We don't have a beeper at the City Clerk's desk?
I'm sorry, I don't know if you couldn't hear it, but I'll try to make it louder.
Yeah, you need to have the beeper go off with about five seconds left. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, our next caller, Karen?
Yes, the next caller is Irene Chisholm. Go ahead, Irene.
Mayor and City Council, my name is Irene Chisholm. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I would like to express my discontent with the process that has taken place with regards to the zoning changes proposed for the southeastern parcel of land in Ontario. I am speaking on the process. Although the pandemic has forced city meetings to take place via Zoom, the process appears to favor the developers more than city residents, which are the ones that are affected by proposed zoning changes. This includes the extended timelines provided the developers versus the limited timelines residents were afforded during each step of this process. Also, residents taking part in the process have had to wait up to three hours on a Zoom call to voice their concerns and were limited to three minutes, while developers, city staff, and appointed staff were provided unlimited time to present and discuss zoning proposals. Residents emailing and calling into the city were not given the recognition they should have had. Since Zoom meetings were required, accommodations could have been allotted to have those messages be read out loud since residents were not able to present their concerns in person to the council. In addition, mailers were not received in a timely manner regarding zoning changes. Also, delays were provided to developers as the council chose to pull their proposed item from the council agenda due to the developer not being able to make the meeting. These delays were not afforded residents to delay placing on agenda, removing it from agenda or delaying it from being on the agenda until in-person meetings could take place. Design and proposals were not presented earlier for residents to review prior to any meetings. Accommodations could have been made during this process. They could have been put on the city website. No reports were provided in a timely manner to the public from developers or city on any studies conducted on the feasibility of remaining in commercial zoning. This was a process that was drawn out over years and delays that surfaced again once COVID forced the city into Zoom meetings. I just asked for a fair and equitable process during these unprecedented times. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Karen, our next caller?
That ends the public comment. Callers?
Well, thank you. And then, so, Mr. City Manager, we'll move into any additions to the agenda. Do you have any announcements to make?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, so we'll move on to consent calendar, and all matters listed under consent calendar will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion unless the council member requests the item to be pulled. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Bowman?
Second.
Second by. We'll have a roll-call vote on passing the consent calendar. Madam City Clerk?
Mayor Leon?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Dorse Parada?
Yes.
Councilmember Wapner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Valencia?
Yes.
Okay, so it passes, and so moved. We'll move to public hearings, and item number eight, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing to consider Mills Act contract preservation agreement for designated historic property located at 1458 North Euclid Avenue. Notice of public hearing has been duly given and affidavits of compliance are on file, and we do not have any callers to this line or written communications.
All right, thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Let the record reflect that we do not have any written comments received and/or anything else, so no speakers to the matter. So at this time, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a discussion and motion from the council.
I'll make a motion that will be passed the.
Approved by Mayor Pretend Parada.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bowman. We'll have a roll-call vote on that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Leon?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Dorse Parada?
Yes.
Councilmember Wapner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Valencia?
Yes.
This is item number nine, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing to consider a general plan amendment changing the land use designation of 10.49 acres of land from public school to low-medium density residential, and amend the avenue-specific plan changing the land use designation of the project site from school to low-medium density residential, and revise applicable exhibits, maps, development standards, and other texts throughout the specific plan to accommodate the proposed land use change on land generally located at the northeast corner of L.A. Avenida Drive and Monty Toba Place.
All right, thank you. I'll open the public hearing, and have there been any written comments or anything else, and nobody else here?
We do have, notice of public hearing was duly given. We do have three callers on the line to this item, and we do not have any written communications.
Okay, good, then I'll ask the City Clerk to introduce the members of the public on hold to speak to the matter.
Yes, Mayor, our first callers are Billy and Oliver Ross.
Mr. Mayor, I may have missed it, and I apologize if I did, but did you open the public hearing?
Yeah, I thought I did.
Thank you.
I say I'll now open the public hearing, and I asked her if there were any written comments.
Okay.
Did I not word it correctly?
My mistake. No, no, I just missed it.
It could happen. Let's just do it right. So thank you for being observant. Okay, so we do, we have opened the public hearing, and I'll ask the City Clerk to introduce the first caller.
The first callers are Billy and Oliver Ross. Let's go ahead. You're live at the meeting.
Karen, let's go to the next caller, and maybe Billy and Oliver will come back. Who's the next caller?
Okay, the next caller is Jason Lee. Go ahead, Jason.
Mr. Mayor, Jason Lee is the applicant. He was here to speak in case the council had any questions.
Okay, so we'll go.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I got cut off. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. This is Jason Lee. I'm the applicant for the project, and I'm just making myself available if there are any questions.
Okay, so hold on, and we'll try to get past, get back to the first two. And then, if they do not, if they've left the line, then we'll just move on. So you want to try again, Karen?
The next caller is Dana Correo. Go ahead, Dana.
Hello.
Hello?
Yes. I can hear you.
Hi, Mayor and Councilmembers, how are you today? My name is Dana, and I live in the New Haven community here in Ontario Ranch. And I purchased my home in 2018. And I guess when we purchased, we were promised, or we were sold on, you know, that there was going to be development for future schools. I'm a stay-home parent with my two children that are now coming into the age of going to school. And this community is full with upcoming residents that are new families that all their children are, I just, I see a big need. And I'm not very well aware of the plans that are taking place because I feel like we're misinformed. But my understanding was that they were, they were no longer going to be making plans to build the school, but rather have the developers are now moving in a different direction in making it commercial, where they're now wanting to build another Starbucks, which that would make it the third Starbucks within, I would say, like a mile or two radius. And I just really see the need for this school and this community, and we're growing in numbers. And we don't know where to put our children to school. So I just, I guess what I'm asking is for the, for the community to be a little more well-informed with what's happening in the developments and, and that if you could please see the need of the schools in our area, especially in this area, that there's a lot of new families that are coming in. And again, like I said, we're, we're expanding this area of Ontario Ranch, and the school that was promised, you know, when I purchased this house, it's disappointing to hear that they're no longer moving in that direction. So if there's anything that you can direct me to, to, to fight for that cause, to be able to continue with the development of our schools in my community, that would be helpful.
I certainly can. I'll speak first and then give it over to the council members. There is a board, a school board, that is accountable to the community in your area of the city, and they are elected independently from the city. And oftentimes, people think that the city is running the schools, but actually, the state runs the schools. And we probably individually, I don't want to speak for the entire council because this isn't about necessarily all of that, but I, I join you in your concern in the lack of schools and the projections that we hear out there. So you have my kind of opinion on that. Is there anybody else? I know Debbie has been working hard on this, and maybe something from staff, and then, of course, we have a gentleman on the phone. So Debbie, what would you like to add?
Mr. Mayor, before you do go to Mayor Pretend, maybe we can check to see if Billy and Oliver Ross can speak to this, and then you can close that public portion of the public hearing and then entertain council comment?
Okay, yeah, so is Billy, are they there?
Yes, I will put them through now.
Okay.
Billy and Oliver, you're live at the meeting. Go ahead.
Yes, this is Billy and Oliver Ross. We purchased in the end of 2018. And we were also told that there were elementary school and a middle school that was going in that really made us purchase within this community because it was in walking distance from our, from our house. I'm right here off of Oaknoe Loop and Calgary, so it would be a short walk for my girls to attend school. I do work from home, so that was very disappointing when we didn't receive the notice saying that it would be changing from school to medium-density residential land. And that's another challenge is where will our kids go to school? It changed the whole dynamics for our family, and to purchase a house, being sold on, schools being in the neighborhood is very, very disappointing. I would, I would definitely like to see a school within this community. Just this community alone is 13, 13 square miles, not including the surrounding new-developed neighborhoods. There's neighborhoods going up all over. So not to have that option is, is very disappointing. And I would like you guys to reconsider.
Okay. Is, do you have anything else to add?
Who, me or Scott?
No, 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 I was talking to the caller. So we'll move to the next caller, Karen?
The next caller is Hanny Abershed. Go ahead, Hanny.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Hanny Abershed. Do you guys hear me?
Yes.
I'm calling today in regards to opposing the land development and the change of the zoning. I moved in late 2018, and I was marketed and sold on a middle school opening up next to my property. I am off of Oaknoe and Calgary also. When I purchased my home, I was basically guaranteed a middle school opening up within one to two years. We're nearing the two-year mark, and no, they haven't broke ground on a school, and I'm getting notices regarding changing the zoning of that. I've been opposed to that. I've made it. I voiced my concerns with that, not only regarding where future children are going to go to school, but also the traffic impact in the area. I've also reached out to Mountain View School District, and they've been very unresponsive to me. I know it's a different entity than you guys. you guys. However, you know, you mentioned voicing our concerns. We're unable to do so. So, I'm left to call in to City Council and basically voice my concern with you guys and letting you guys know that I am opposed to the zoning change as, you know, I did purchase my house for a middle school which is coming next door. And also, we're paying a premium in taxes. Our tax rate is almost 1.9, almost 2% for new schools, not new homes. And I just want to make you guys aware that, you know, not only myself, I'm sure plenty of my neighbors are opposed to this. I don't think notices were sent out in a timely manner. I think I received my notice less than a week ago. And with COVID, there should be additional time for families to prepare for this meeting or to get notified. And so, that's why I'm calling today. I'm opposed to the zoning change and I would like you guys to reconsider. Once the land is converted into medium to low residential, we can't go back from that. Our needs right now, we have almost 1,500 new homes. We have about 1,500 new homes in the area and the school district basically said, once you guys hit, I think it was 1,200, that they would break ground on the school. However, we haven't seen anything, but to go and change the zoning right now, I, I think would be negative impact on not only my community, but also surrounding areas. It's something that we need to consider and hold off on in the future until we're able to work everything out with the Mountain View School District. Thank you guys for your time.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Karen, is there anybody else online?
No mayor, no more callers.
We had one of them was the developer or the project manager that we kind of put off because there was nobody.
Jason Lee.
Yes. You still there?
Did you want me to put him through?
Yeah, I think, I think that we kind of put him off because there was nobody to speak to it at the time.
Okay. Okay, Jason, you're live at the meeting.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. This is Jason Lee. I'm calling in again. I did want to respond and give you some background on the history of this project and give you some insight as to where and how we ended up here. I've been involved in this project since 2007. We did, we developed the actual project that the people are calling from. We sold that project to D.R. Horton and they, they built it. And as part of that development, I was in front of you, in front of City Council, getting the project approved. We did designate a portion of our land for a 10-acre portion along with the Brookside, Brookfield project next door to us, another 10 acres for ultimately a middle school. And that was done because we entered into an agreement as directed by the city staff and City Council, entered in a school mitigation agreement with the school district that designated where all the schools for the upcoming entire Ontario Ranch would go. So, there's, there's one high school, there's two middle schools. I think there's 11 or 12 elementary schools, all planned and designated and land used throughout the Ontario Ranch area. When we did that, we entered into the agreement with the school district. We mapped it on our plans. We then graded the parcel so that it was ready for us to turn over to the school district when it came time for them to purchase it. When the time came up, which is about 2008, we reached out to them, I'm sorry, not 2008, 2018, we reached out to them, let them know that it was ready for them to pick, to acquire. And they took about a year and a half of time and then came back and said they reanalyzed their needs and that they did not need the middle school. That caught us completely off guard. It actually cost us a significant amount of money to then reprocess it and redo it. It wasn't our first intention to do this and we're kind of at the mercy of what the school district has chosen and done. We, we wanted to make sure this was correct. I believe city staff went and met with the school district to confirm that this was the case and they did reiterate that it was, it was not their desire to build a middle school there. We are acquiring, we are only building on the 10 acres. The remaining 10 acres is being left for a future elementary school. It's part of their plans and Brookfield is still in negotiations. The letter I received from Brookfield just a few weeks ago said they're still in negotiations with the district on that. So, it's going from a middle school down to an elementary school. As far as traffic with the few seconds I have left, we did do an analysis that removed the middle school and left it as an elementary school and our 110 units. And we actually have less traffic than, than previously was going to be generated by a middle school. So, and we don't have 110 units on this project anymore. We have much less now. So, I think that adjusts most of the caller's questions and I'm open for any other comments from the council or in there.
Yeah, just hang on. So, I'm gonna, are there any other callers, Karen, that we have not heard from?
No mayor.
Okay, so, at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and I would highly entertain a discussion from the council. And Debbie, I think you were first.
Yeah, I would like to let the callers know that the council's not happy with the school district, or at least I'm not happy with the school district and their performance here of late. To think that we have entered into a specific plan with them some years back and planned where all the different schools are going to go, we're sort of just, well, I'm disappointed that they're not holding to that agreement. And I would encourage every one of you to attend the Mountain, just Mountain View School District Board meetings, which are on the second Monday of every month. I think they start at 6:30. But you guys are going to have to go down there and petition and get them to say, you know, to, to listen to your needs and your wants because they're the ones that hold the strings, the purse strings, everything to this development. And I know that the City Council, we want to have a workshop with them and we'd like to have it before Christmas because we want to get this settled. We're no longer going to do this waiting game with them that we've been doing the last several years. So, please know that this takes the, the middle school out, but it definitely leaves the elementary school. And I would hope for a K through eight elementary school because I know as a mom and a new grandmom that I like K through eights much better than I like a, a middle school at all. So, I think that it keeps a sense of family and doesn't make the kids have to mature too fast. So, I would appreciate that. So, I'm listening and hearing you. Please know that the elementary school still stays. Please go to those school board meetings on that second Monday. And when we have this workshop with the school district, we'll make sure that we let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Alan, I, as I, as I recollect and you were knee-deep in this discussion, kind of leading the charge and trying to persuade the powers that be that this might not be the best decision, not about the rezoning, but about not having the school. So, I hand it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not disappointed. I'm extremely angry about what happened here. Mountain View School District lied to the city, lied to the developers, and more importantly, lied to our neighbors down in Ontario Ranch. When we laid out, as, as the Mayor Pro Tems did, we laid out a master plan. We had planned on the schools. In fact, we asked the school district, how many schools will you need and where would you like them? And our developers committed the land that they wanted. They paid impact fees to build the schools. The folks living down there are still paying money for the schools and the school district says they don't need anymore. They have one middle school to serve the entire district, unheard of. And certainly, I, I believe, just like you, we speak for the entire council, is that we're not going to stand for this. And as the Mayor Pro Tem stated, we're going to go do an open forum for all the neighbors down there and know that we are on your side, that we're all fighting to get the schools there. And understand that tonight's action, we can't penalize the developer because the school district doesn't want to buy the site. We can't ask them to hold that land forever. And the developer has worked for over 10 years to get the school district to buy the site. They have decided they don't want it. And we real, I don't want to say we don't have a choice. Of course, we have a choice, but to be fair to the developers, we need to do the rezone so they can use the land that they own. And it's going to take everyone in the community, especially the folks down in the Ontario Ranch, to put pressure on the school district and say, hey, we're paying for those schools. We're all our schools. They expect all of you to take your kids up to Ranch View, which is in the northern port of the part of the area just off of Riverside. And that's crazy. We set up this area to have neighborhood schools that people can walk to. So, again, it's not this council. This council's extremely upset about what's happening. It's not your developers. They told you it was going to be there because it was supposed to be there. The blame lies solely on the Mountain View School District. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes, I concur with my council members and Mayor Pro Tem as well because we have to really pay attention and be careful what happens because once the developers, you know, which, you know, I appreciate that developers, you know, are holding out as long as possible. But once the school district gives away that piece of property with all the development coming down to the south area, there's no other places that we're going to be able to have the school districts acquire to put a school in if they, if they miscalculate and later on say, hey, now we need a school. So, you know, I do encourage everybody to really pay attention. The residents down in the south end, pay attention. You have a couple of new, I believe, two new school board members down there. I was at a groundbreaking on the 10th Parkview down in the south end of an elementary and, you know, I did mention it to him that I, you know, that the council, we are concerned. So, they're, they know that this is coming. They know that the residents are upset, along with my colleagues. So, we appreciate you guys speaking out on behalf of this. Thank you.
Jim, do you have anything to add?
No, I concur with everything that's, that's been said and the due diligence of the council remains in a support of our community and our schools if they would just listen.
Yeah, and I, as the city manager pointed out, I kind of jumped out of the gate because my angst is so high. I, I kind of boycotted the groundbreaking the other day. I wasn't about to go and support them when they're doing such, such a poor job of, of doing what is right for the community. All of you callers who have called in tonight, you, you know that you're preaching to the choir here on this subject. And as Mr. Wattner so aptly explained, we, we've been championing a cause that we don't, we don't really have control of because the school districts are state-controlled, not city-controlled. And we exist side by side, but that's about where it ends because you, the people in the south, are the voters who vote in the school board who make these kinds of decision, decisions and that either positively or adversely affect you. So, I want you to know that we are with you, but also, as Mr. Wattner explained, it's been an ongoing battle for many years and the investment that the developers have down there on, on that property that they were, I mean, they're just told, we're not buying it by the school district. And so, that's why we have to do the rezoning. At least I, I will say for me, we see the need. I see that our city attorney was, we were about to jump in on something there. Yeah, we haven't taken a vote on it. So, I'm just saying that, that's why we have this item before us because the developers are, are now at the place to where they have to do something. They can't, can't, you know, go upside down. They've been, they've held this land, Alan said, for 10 years, but actually, we did, we did the Ontario Plan about 20 years ago. And we were bringing it up to them back then and saying, where do you want this to go? And they said, this is where you want it to go. And then now here we are 20 years later and they're saying, we don't want it. Actually, 18 years later, they're saying we don't want it at all. So, that's not fair. It's not fair to anybody. It's not, you think you were sold a bill of goods and you were when, when, and the developers were working on, out of good conscience and saying, hey, this is where there's going to be a school. And then out of nowhere, the school district decides at the 11, 11:58, they don't want to do it. So, I applaud you all for calling us, but as Mayor Pro Tem Parada has pointed out, it's time to get up and go to the school board meetings and, and have a call for action and support us in supporting you. So, thank you for all of your calls. And having said all of my, what I'm going to say, I'm going to entertain a motion from the council on this.
Relentingly, I'm going to move that we support the item.
Second.
So, there's a motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tem, second by Mr. Bowman. We'll have a roll to call, vote. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor Leon.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Doris Parada.
Yes.
Councilmember Wapner.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Valencia.
Yes.
All right, thank you. So moved, so ordered. And folks, I want to thank you all for calling in and letting us hear your voices. Keep it up. We need you. We need you to help us because we're in this fight with you. Item number 10, Madam City Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing to consider an ordinance approving the development agreement between the City of Ontario and Ontario Schaefer Holdings LLC to establish the terms and conditions for the development of tentative tract map 20298, a 10.49 acre property located at the northeast corner of La Avenida Drive and Manitoba Place. Notice a public hearing has been duly given and affidavits of compliance are on file and we do not have any callers.
So, I'll open the public hearing with the record reflect any written comments received. Are there any?
We have no written comments, sir.
Okay, so no written comment, no written and no call-ins. So, I'll close the public hearing at this time, entertain a discussion or motion from council.
Make a motion that we approve the item.
A motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tem, second by Mr. Bowman. Have a roll to call, vote. Madam City Clerk?
Mayor Leon.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Doris Parada.
Yes.
Councilmember Wapner.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Valencia.
Yes.
All right, that takes us to item number 11. Madam City Clerk?
This is a public hearing to consider a general plan amendment to modify the land use plan, changing the land use designation of 41.35 acres of land from mixed use to 7.6 acres of general commercial and 33.75 acres of industrial designated land and modify policy plan future build-out to be consistent with the proposed land use designation changes. A specific plan amendment rescinding the Tusk, Tuscana Village specific plan and zone change on 41.35 acres of land from low-density residential to community commercial and to 33.75 acres of life, light industrial and 7.6 acres of community commercial sown land. The project site is located at the northwest corner of Riverside Drive and Millikan Avenue. Notice a public hearing has been duly given and affidavits of compliance are on file. There are no written comments, but I believe we do have two callers.
All right, thank you very much. I'll open the public hearing with the record reflect that there are no written comments and I will ask Karen for you to introduce our first caller.
Yes, Mayor, our first caller is Santo Rabali. Go ahead, Santo.
Santo, are you out there? Okay, well, we'll just kind of hold out for Santo to come back. Karen, can we move to the next caller?
Yes, our next caller is Irene Chisholm. Go ahead, Irene.
Mayor and City Council, I'm here in disagreement with the development of rezoning the property on the northwest corner of Riverside Drive and Milliken. This property was, is zoned for mixed use. I think that was done in the past. I think it's, should be considered in the future because this allows for other buildings besides or other entities besides having industrial buildings on the property. I understand that commercial property is not feasible, at least a large chunk is not feasible on this site. And I'm not living in the past. I know as hearing the Ontario Ranch residents being promised different things, we were also promised different things. So, I'm not going to the past, I'm going to the future. And this Tuscano development was for And this Tuscano development was for low density residential. I think that allows for the mixed use. I think that should be something that should be considered. Since the state of California is having a housing shortage, I think this would blend in with the community. The residential areas in the community. I know that there are proposals for smaller buildings to be built in the front. But there are large buildings that were not told to the residents about being built on several properties, which one property is owned by San Antonio Winery and the other is Galliano. So they're expecting that those will be putting in industrial buildings. I'm not so much opposed to having San Antonio have a building that they could educate people with regards to what the land used to be. The culture of the land. I am opposed with loading up the corners, making it heavy with industrial buildings. Pushing it back may be something to think about in including some type of residential. You you need to to know that when you're talking about being on the side of residents, this is the time that you need to listen. Residents are talking about not wanting large buildings with a large number of docks, truck docks. The truck traffic is extensive. I know you say you've done traffic studies, but having trucks go in and out of this corner. And we're not even talking about the other corners that propose for industrial. So I ask you to yourself and and listen to the residents. You've already said that the council is on the side of the residents. So I ask that you you do that. I don't know if that was the the one minute warning or what it was, but I didn't hear a one minute warning.
Your time has expired.
Is that one minute or what?
No, your time has expired.
I don't.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Ms. Chisholm. And we'll move on to see if Karen has Santo returned.
Yes, Mayor, Santo has returned.
Okay.
Go ahead, Santo, you're live at the meeting.
When she starts, there's a little microphone that comes up that's muted.
Can you hear me, everyone?
There you go. You're with us now, Santo.
There we go, good. There we go. Hello, I'm Santo Reebly. I think I better make this one quick. But I represent the Reebly family, which is my family of San Antonio Winery. I hope you could all hear me.
Yes.
We have, thank you. We have been a long time there in the city of Ontario and we're really proud of that. I think it's something like 45 years that those who may not know it or realize it that we have been on that spot. And I remember the time when it was so much agriculture and that's what we had. It was such a rural area. And we were one of the first to put up something modern in that particular area. But we're very long term people. We've always taken care of our community, our business, the 250 employees that we have with us. And we've always considered that a trait in helping us navigate and make ourselves a little more successful in life. The question comes up about the tasting room and it's come up a few times. We will be keeping the tasting room definitely. It's it's just such an important part of Ontario and our business. But we do want to expand what we do there. We simply don't have enough space to have events and community get togethers. We simply do not. And that's one of our goals in the new development. In regards to the buildings, one building will be used by the winery, the large building. You know, we have a very large network of wine that we produce and sell and we are completely full in Los Angeles. So we will be using one of our buildings for the San Antonio Winery exclusively. Regards to the company itself and to our family and our integrity. Yes, we we are one of the oldest operating businesses in the city of Los Angeles. We've been there 103 years. We've been now in four generations. And we are one of the oldest operating family wineries in the state of California. There's very few of us remaining anymore. I think something like 40. So we believe in integrity. We believe doing the right thing as far as the project. I know there's been different projects suggested over time around us. But we feel this is a good flow. A nice in incorporating the three properties, just a good flow, a good look, a good ingress and egress for a project in this particular part of Ontario. So on behalf of the family, we do support it. We hope you consider this favorably. And if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to to answer this for, on behalf of all of us. So thank you, everyone.
Okay, then why don't you just kind of hang loose and hold on in case anybody has any? I'm going to go, is, are there any other callers that we've missed, Karen?
Yes, the next caller is Brant Ross.
Okay.
Go ahead, Brant.
Mr. Ross, can you hear us?
Can you guys hear me?
There you go.
Okay, great. This is Grant Ross from Orbis Real Estate Partners. We're fortunate to to have this project and present it in front of you. This is our fifth development in the city of Ontario. We certainly are grateful for the for the mayor and the council for the commitment that they've given. You know, and everything that's going on in the in the environment today with COVID and everything else. I just want to let you guys know that your staff has done a phenomenal job. And really, you know, at times to our detriment, trying to push the absolute best product and best development that they can get through here. And when you look at, when you look at this property and this proposed development from a from a space shuttle, you won't realize the fact that it really is on the border of the city boundary. And the fact that it's it's a remnant parcel there relative to improvement costs. There's significant improvements that the city will benefit from. Our offsite infrastructure cost is $6 million. We've worked very closely with with the Reebly family and then also the Gallianos. And you guys should have received a letter from from the Galliano family. It's been an absolute pleasure to work with both families. As it relates to the Reeblys and Santo shared this is that, and they went in further depth during planning commission. But they do plan to enhance the tasting room with an educational area and outside area where where people can gather, where the community can really meet and join. We're fortunate enough to have, you know, good tenants in terms of the retail tenants that we're getting. So, you know, we're fortunate, we really find it fortunate to be continuing to do business in the city of Ontario. You guys are truly the pioneers in terms of of moving projects forward and understanding the grand scheme of things. And so we're here to answer any questions. Our team of consultants are available if you have any questions. But thank you again.
Okay, just kind of hang in there in case you do need a question. So are there any other callers, Karen?
Yes, we have three individuals that are consultants that are available for questions.
Okay, so they can just hang on if we need them? Or do they prefer to make a statement at this time? I think they just need to hang on, right?
They would like to hold on.
Okay. All right, thank you, Karen. So at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and entertain a discussion or motion from the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Wattner.
So this is a tough one, obviously. Once again, the the council would love to fulfill the commitment that was made with the original zoning. But that that property has been vacant for decades. And I can tell you, for the 26 years that I've been on the council, there hasn't been a time that we have not tried to market that property. Originally, we tried to put a big box power center in there. And we couldn't get any takers because they said it was too difficult to get there. By the time you saw it, you couldn't get there. We had a residential developer come in that was going to join with a commercial developer. At the end of the day, they said it wasn't going to work for them. At one point, the city stepped up and said, we will give land for free. We'll buy it and give it to a sit down restaurant for free, no takers. And and this is the problem, folks. One, it really isn't a good location for residential because it's right on the freeway. More than that, the city does not own that land. And if we were to deny every single use to that landlord, or essentially, the city's taking their land. And I don't believe in eminent domain. I don't think any of my colleagues do either. So it's one of those kinds of decisions that I I think and I understand that that the developer did work with the community and actually made some design changes pursuant to some community requests. And I and I certainly appreciate that. So it's something we got to move forward with. And I really think at the end of the day, the the folks down there in Creekside, Creekside East are going to appreciate it. I'm glad we have two of the longest standing families working with us that want to do this development. Gallianos and the Reeblys. And we're proud of having those families in our city. Everybody knows those families. They developed the best wine. Don's still growing grapes. I don't know if the Reeblys are still growing grapes. I'm assuming they are. But, you know, if it was something that we didn't really want, these are the people I'd want to have there. If that makes any sense. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alan. Well, well stated. Anybody else? Debbie, I see your hand up.
Yeah. I asked Scott Murphy to help me out today with a satellite map. If he could throw that up there for me, I'd truly appreciate it. So this is really hard for me. I've been listening to the residents. I'm hearing them. I know what they're hoping for. You know, in doing all my research here, I've been looking at all of the different trends when it comes to retail and commercial and how we're just not able to get what we've been trying for. On this map here, where the circles are, is where the current retail centers are going to be. I mean, if you look at the yellow ones, which are already here with us, many of them, especially the ones over, say, on Archibald and Riverside. You know, you have some vacant, vacant strip malls, things in there that we just can't seem to fill. Even I know that our economic development team has been working with the property owner over there. And we're still, you know, trying to get that to be a better retail center. Down on the bottom by Bellgrave, I know that Sprouts and some other retailer are moving into there. We just over at Haven and Archibald Ranch, the brand new Stater Brothers Center that's going to have three fabulous restaurants and a brewery in there. And the red ones are proposed retail ones that are, should be coming up soon. And when it comes to the those green arrows out there, that's when it comes to the market study and looking at the market study and looking at the one mile radius and the five mile radius and how people who want to have successful commercial retail businesses, they look for the rooftops. And if you look, you know, east of Hamner, there just aren't any rooftops there and that just makes it hard. And that's why we're so lucky to have San Antonio Winery and the Galliano family because those are destination stations. Those are, people come there because they know that they're there. And that's just going to complement the residents there. And I really hope that the San Antonio Winery really could really build us a nice, maybe lunch and dinner house there that would to complement their wines. That would be really nice to, or even to do what they do in Los Angeles would be really nice. And hopefully keeping Wanchos too, because Wanchos is a staple there in the Creekside area. So for me, I really put a lot of time and effort into this and I really have listened. But when I look at all of this, I just don't see how we're going to be able to put much more there. So I just wanted everybody to know that I really did do my due diligence here. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to comment at this time? All right, I don't see anybody jumping to the forefront. I'm going to add my very simple two cents. It's creative design. And as, once again, as Mr. Wattner pointed out, that there have been many attempts to develop this this corner over the years. And a lot of times, people have this idea that the city has total control over a property and we don't. So they'll say things like, I want a Trader Joe's there. As if we own Trader Joe's and we own the property. Or they will say, I want Starbucks there. Although now with the proliferation of Starbucks, we're starting to hear people say, I don't want a Starbucks anymore. But the reality is, we don't own the property, as Alan pointed out. And we've been doing our due diligence for many, many years to make this a vibrant, profitable corner and property for all of the people who are in that community, which is obviously right next to Creekside. The idea of asking us to listen, we do listen. We, not only do we listen, we're probably trying to lead the charge most of the time in the conversation. And and so I don't want to say, well, we we listened in in the last subject, but we're not listening here because that's not at all. We are listening every single time with everything we've got. And then you go and you see where we all are doing due diligence, like Debbie pointed out, and getting the maps and getting all of the ideas. And the one thing that is not up anymore, with the map that was up, it's very clear. And if you could put it back up, Scott, is that three quarters of the the surrounding area is 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 industrial. And as Debbie pointed out, that that circle of rooftops and residential, it becomes essential in success for any kind of development that has a lot of retail. And as you look and you see those green arrows that are pointing in every direction, they're pointing at warehouses and industrial. And they're not pointing at rooftops, which are, if there was another arrow pointing left, that's, and maybe even south, yes. But when when businesses do their their studies, their economic studies, they have to have a circle. And it radiates out from them, not just from somewhere nearby. So you can say to the left, there's a lot of rooftops, but there are no rooftops to the north, east and and generally south. So this has to be some kind of a development that works, given that, I will say this, though. It is kind of like a crossroads in in the country. You have the intersection of the 10 and the 60 freeways. Excuse me, not the 10, the 15 and the 60 freeway. And and that's, those are very heavily traveled freeways. And there's an off ramp right there. But also, as Mr. Wattner pointed out, most of the time travelers are thinking about going north or south or east or west and not looking at the off ramps. By the time they see something, they're gone. They'd have to travel, you know, at least a mile or so before they can get up and turn around in most cases. So it it isn't necessarily the best intersection in the world as by design. I don't even think it was great design in the past for the forefathers of Ontario, long before my time, to have developed all of these warehouses north of the 60 instead of allowing there to be some some homes. But, you know, that's that's neither here nor there. So what we end up with in the in the now is the present state of of marketing, the present state of the way developments work. And as Mr. Wattner so eloquently explained earlier on, this is what is working for the best of everybody, including these long term families that have been invested in our community for hundreds of years, or 100, hundreds, but, you know, 100 and some years. And and it's time for them, for their investments to to start to take root. And so that this, I've looked at this development quite intensely and I just don't see anything that is that negative, it's just not negative. I actually like this one north of Riverside Drive quite a bit because I think that it, once it's done, I think that all of the people in the region are really going to love it. And I think Debbie alluded to that fact, too. It's going to be done very well. And so with all of that being said, I'm going to ask for a motion from the council. Motion to deny.
Wattner moves it.
We're on a second. Let's go for a roll call.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Leon.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dorse Parada.
Yes.
Councilmember Wapner.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Valencia.
Yes.
So moved and so ordered. All right. Takes us to item number 12, Madam City Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is a public hearing to consider a general plan amendment to modify policy, policy plan, land use plan, changing the land use designation on approximately 46 acres of land from general, commercial and business park to four point 13 acres of neighborhood commercial, 3.51 acres of business park and 39 acres industrial, modify policy plan, future build out to be consistent with the land use designation changes. And an amendment to the Eden Glen specific plan, changing the land use designation from community, commercial, business park flex zone and business park light industrial to 4.13 acres of neighborhood commercial, 3.51 acres of business park and 39 acres of light industrial. The project site is located at the southwest corner of Riverside Drive and Hamner Avenue. Notice, a public hearing has been duly given and affidavits of compliance are on file. There are no written communications. And I believe the only callers we have online are, um, applicants or developers available to answer questions.
Okay, so, um, I'll open the public hearing and let the record reflect any written comments. Madam City Clerk.
No, sir. No written comment.
And, and there are generally no callers other than applicants who are willing to support it, right? So, um, uh, i- is that correct? Just, just applicants are willing to
Well.
answer questions?
Mr. Mayor, looks like we do have one caller.
Glad I asked. So we're opening the public hearing and entertain a, uh, uh, I'll hear from the caller.
Yes, Mayor. Our caller is Irene Chisholm. Go ahead, Irene.
Okay, it's me again, Irene Chisholm. I guess that you're going to go ahead and, um, this is a done deal. And, um, so I guess I'm waiting for the next one to pop up. To see that you're going to put, load both corners, one next to Eden Glen and one next to Creekside with, uh, large industrial buildings. I'm not, and I told you this in my last, um, uh, comment, that I'm not thinking about the past, but yet you keep on doing that thing that, um, you're in the past. We promised you in the past. I'm not. And that's why I had asked for other considerations, but you said you did your due diligence. Um, and it seems like industrial buildings are the end thing. As I had heard from, uh, a little man from Orbit, um, after one of the meetings that commented after I said, how many, um, industrial buildings does Ontario need? And he laughed and said a lot. Um, I was insulted by that after I gave time and energy and gave them the ideas to put in the cultural land ideas to go with the wineries. I should have charged them for my time. I'm, I'm very upset, um, that you're, you say you're listening, but I don't think you're hearing. And, and it's evident, and I hope that Ontario ranch residents clue in, don't leave any land undeveloped because that's the problem we've had over here is undeveloped land. The patchwork development, the cherry picking development that's happened in the southern part of Ontario has been atrocious. And I'm so disappointed with the planning department, with the city council. I'm tired of people blaming each other. Um, they don't get on the same page and work with each other for the best interest of the community.
One minute remaining.
All I have to say, I'll leave my one minute to you.
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, with all of that being said, uh, we're going to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, my apologies. I believe we have another caller, Karen.
Okay, thank you. We're back to the opening the public hearing for another caller. Let's hear from.
Yes, Mayor. The next caller is Deandre Lampkin. Go ahead, Deandre.
Mr. Mayor and, and members of council, um, thank you. I, I thought I was going to get skipped here. But I appreciate, uh, the diligence of the staff to make sure I did a lot, or my comments were heard. Um, I, I think that the council, uh, pretty much summed it up. Kind of where we are today in, in 2020 in regards to the space and the surrounding area around Millikan and Riverside Drive. And I know that the Creekside residents and Eden Glen residents have been speaking on this issue for almost a matter of, almost three years now. And so I definitely, um, feel for, uh, the, what the residents were saying in regards to what was promised many years ago and where we landed now. Um, but we have to, I, I kind of feel like we have to recognize the writing on the wall and we have to recognize again, where we are in 2020, especially in regards to where the market is. And, uh, one of the things that I spoke about at the last planning meeting is the fact that we need to just recognize that mistakes were made 20 or 30 years ago when the, um, commercial properties were put in east of the area and north of the 60. And whoever made those decisions, they didn't realize that they were actually causing some promises that were made to Creekside residents, uh, at the time to go unfulfilled. Because as you can see, we don't have the rooftops to get the commercial spaces that we need. So I'm actually, uh, okay with the decision to move forward with some of the zone changes. Um, I actually, I know we spoke on, uh, on this matter at the, for the last item. Um, what's going on, what's going to happen on the northwest corner. But on the southwest corner, uh, one of the things that I'm noticing that was not done by the developers or probably not done as, as aggressively on the, uh, by the developers on the southwest corner is an attempt to try to come to some type of compromise. There, uh, based on the renderings that were provided, there, it looks like there's no attempt to try to pay homage to the area, to the history of the area. I'd like to see some changes made to the frontage on Riverside Drive to make it more aesthetically pleasing to the residents. And I also like to see some type of attempt to, uh, try to, uh, come up with some type of aesthetic change to pay respect to the history of the area and just kind of like a nod or to pay respect for, toward, uh, the history of the area and try to do something, uh, where in, in the future, if there's, if there's room to maybe transform the, the buildings that will be facing Riverside Drive into some type of mixed use or some type of, uh, commercial space to make that possible. That's the only thing I asked for. Uh, again, I understand the need, um, for us to look at something different because of where we are today. But I'd like to see some of the same effort given by the developers on the north side of Riverside Drive, given by the, uh, that, by the developers on the south side of Riverside Drive. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. And, um, so are we out of calls, Karen? Is that it?
We have the two consultants that are available for questions.
Okay, so, um, we can keep them available. So, uh, at this time, I'll close the public hearing. And I'll entertain a discussion or motion from council.
From Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Bowman.
You know, I, something that really impresses me is a, a developer that really wants to be part of the community and really interface with the community and reflect a product that maybe not everybody is totally excited about, but at least we've met some, we've, we've met each other halfway. And I understand that there's been some really good positive sessions on the northwest to that effect with Creekside East and West. And that project, uh, looks pretty good. I also am of the opinion, and correct me if I'm wrong, that that interface and that that activity has not taken place to the extent it should have been between this developer, this, the quote, organization and the folks affected by this project. And I, I go back and so does Alan for the days when we actually petitioned Alaska to have control over this uh, property. It used to be, of course, agriculture and then it went to the Ontario ranch eventually. But a lot of promises have been made over the years. I, I really think that we should condition, if we approve this project, uh, that a certain amount of, of, uh, retail, uh, restaurants, those types of things be part of the project. And a transition into the hardscape, which would be your distribution, whatever toward the back. But on Riverside Drive, perhaps on the Melican face, there, there needs to be a soft transition. There needs to be opportunities for those folks to drive down the street and enjoy the things that other, other folks have in their neighborhoods. The amenities. And I'm not suggesting, I, I, I'm just saying four to five acres, something to that effect. But I, I won't support this project unless the project's conditioned on, on those terms. And to the extent that building permits on anything are not issued unless this moves forward with that caveat of the voting in a certain part of this project. The needs of that community, which yet they need to sit down and meet.
Thank you, Ms. Parada.
Yeah, I agree with my, um, my council colleague, Jim, but I also agree with, um, the caller, um, too, where I feel that, uh, the north side really worked hard to complement the community and to try to make it the best project that they could be. We're here. I just don't feel that sense of camaraderie or that community feel. And I too, I'm not ready to approve this project unless some, um, additional, um, uh, zoning changes. I'd really like to see more commercial. Um, so I'm leaning towards, um, waiting to see what other my other colleagues say here. So.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I may just provide one bit of clarification because um, based on the insights of, uh, Mr. Bowman and Mayor Pro Tem, I think there is a, a path forward based on the conditions from Planning Commission. As you know, this project, uh, contemplates a little over four acres of neighborhood commercial on the corner of Riverside and Hamner and about three and a half acres as you move to the west of Business Park. What Planning Commission and, and Mr. Murphy can correct me if, if I'm being inaccurate, what Planning Commission did in a very unusual step that I think reflects the, the, um, lack of engagement, I guess, I'll, I'll, I'll term it at this point, with the community. Planning Commission required, didn't just condition the, the developer to work with the staff, but required the project to come back before them to do a, a lot of what Mr. Bowman is, is describing and, and also, uh, Ms. Parada. That the, uh, business park, uh, properties, the frontage along Riverside needed to be changed, uh, such that the docks were to the back, that, that the, the property itself as developed would resemble more of flex space. And that flex space is space that is intended to be allowed to be converted as the, uh, the market changes to a, a small craft brewery, to a studio, uh, to some other use beyond uh, your typical business park or, or light industrial. Uh, the developer has come back pursuant to that direction, began working with the planning, uh, staff and would anticipate going back to Planning Commission for those approvals. But in reflection of what Mr. Bowman has indicated, as well as Ms. Parada and looking at just some of the body language of council members on, on the call, I think that you, your direction would be for the planning staff uh, as they bring it to Planning Commission to, uh, take an even harder edge to what the submittal would be and what it would look like along that Riverside Drive frontage. So that it just look like, uh, something that is flex space, but actually functions as flex space.
But what's the guarantee that that's going to happen?
Well, and, and that's the, that's the, the million dollar question. A- Alan, were you?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the city manager, but I would like to say something too. First, I just wanted to hit in general about what Irene had to say about the, um, influx of industrial. Irene, it's because of people like you and me. Brick and mortar's coming down. We're all using e-commerce. And Amazon needs someplace to have people store all their goods. And that's why industrial's so popular. Um, the comments I have about this project, one, when we received the, um, the, the project on the northwest, it was with a unanimous vote of our Planning Commission with no concerns at all.
Hold on, Alan. You just cut out. Your internet is weak. Let's wait till he comes back, huh? Am I the only one who lost him or did everybody lose him?
We lost him.
Uh, Alan, you might want to have to.
Back and says we can support it.
Okay.
Alan, you need to repeat that.
Yeah, you, you stop. You, you, we lost you for a few minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. What, what I said was.
Irene, and then you went on.
Okay, what I said was, um, although we got a unanimous support recommendation from Planning Commission for the northwest on the southwest, this portion, the Planning Commission, it seemed like reluctantly approved it, but subject to some concerns that they had. And I frankly would prefer not to vote on this until we're satisfied that the Planning Commission's concerns have been met. So I, I, I'm certainly looking forward to hearing what everyone else has to say, but I would support a continuance on this until the Planning Commission.
I, I would concur.
You're here.
Yeah, and, and to address what Debbie is saying, uh, was asking before, um, I kind of interrupted her is that we've been in this predicament before where we say, well, okay, and I, and I, and I'm going to just point it straight up. We were in a decision-making process for Fourth and Mountain in Ontario. Uh, I mean, of course, in Ontario. And, and we, we, uh, agreed to let some things happen based upon the goodwill of the, the, uh, the, the family and the developer. They didn't, they never followed through because we didn't have any, you know, nails in the coffin. And so I want to make sure that we have some, some hooks in this that, uh, when we say this is what we, and we can say this, that this, this is what we want to see. As you can hear from the city council, uh, uh, majority is that it, it isn't quite up to spec on what we believe is, is, uh, possible for that corner. And I just want to say, I had mentioned earlier that it's at the, it's at a crossroad of a freeway and it is directly across from an off-ramp. Which means that if anybody is actually aware of its existence, I think it's going to get a lot of high traffic more than they know. It's also right before an on-ramp. And so you have on, off-ramps coming from both directions and, and a mile up, a mile down, a mile, it, it, it has so much accessibility. I'm not so sure that there's been a, uh, complete research in, once again, uh, the, the modern, um, mentality that maybe they're not considering every possibility for the success of the site. And that's from us might get them to where it goes. Uh, in addressing this, this whole conversation about, that we don't listen, you know, we do, but there are more than one opinion out there. And so, and then I think that there's kind of, uh, maybe there's something to be said because obviously our opinions are probably reflecting the opinion of the caller. Uh, but at, at the same time, you know, we, we get swatted at. But the reality is, is we're not just watching and, and, and hoping that everything turns out right. We're, we're, we're full on in this stuff. And we're, we're doing everything that we can to make sure that the, the Ontario, the future is set for our kids, grandkids and beyond. Because we're not going to be the, the people who said, yeah, just put warehouses anywhere. We're just not going to be that. And that's not who we are. So, uh, I think that, Mr. Wagner, you're, you're, uh, giving a motion for a continuance of this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I would second.
Mr. Mayor, before the, before the council votes on the motion to continue, I do want to, uh, advise the council of what I think might be an issue and I might have to ask Mr. Murphy's assistants just to confirm. If I'm not mistaken, a motion to continue this item, um, might mean that it has to be delayed until the new year because of the number of general plan amendments that the city has processed so far this year and was intending to process tonight. Uh, Mr. Ochoa, if Mr. Murphy, if either you or Mr. Murphy could confirm that, um, I'm happy to stand corrected, but I did want to let the council know that that might be an issue.
Right. You are correct. This is the fourth general plan cycle of the year and by state law, we're only allowed to amend our land use settlement four times a year. So any decision to continue this would have to be held over till at least 2021 before we could, uh, act on it.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I would submit that if that's what it takes to get it right, so what? Let's just do it.
I agree with, um, Mr. Bowman.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, I, I don't think Planning Commission would get to it till then anyway. It would probably go through planning in, in December, correct? Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, yeah.
Potentially, yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, so there's a a a a motion to continue the item second, and let's uh have a. Um roll call vote on that.
Mayor Leon?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Dorst Parada?
Yes.
Councilmember Wapner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Valencia?
Yes.
All right, so move to order. Um that takes us to item number fourteen.
We were on item number thirteen.
Excuse me, item number thirteen.
I would advise, sir, that number thirteen is the development agreement for the item that you just continued, so that would be continued as well to a date in the future. Thus, taking number fourteen.
Okay, so uh we're we're just uh. Continue item number thirteen in conjunction with item number twelve.
Mr. Mayor, there's there's no need for the council to take up the vote, it would just be um removed from the agenda, I think, table. You're gonna have to schedule a new public hearing anyway.
Okay. So uh we're going to continue that, and then we'll move on to item number fourteen.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing to consider an ordinance approving the development agreement between the City of Ontario and Euclid Land Venture LLC. To establish the terms and conditions for the development of tentative parcel map two zero zero one six. And eighty-five point six property located at the northeast corner of Merrill Avenue and Euclid. Of the Ontario Ranch Business Park. Business Park Notice of Public Hearing has been duly given and affidavits of compliance are on file. There are no written communications um. And I don't believe we have any callers.
Okay, um. So I'll open the public hearing. And we have no written communication or callers, uh and so close the. Public hearing and entertain a uh conversation or motion from council.
I'll have a motion.
So a motion to approve by. Councilmember Valencia.
Thank you.
Second by Member Bowman. Take a roll call on that, Madam City Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Leon?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Dorst Parada?
Yes.
Councilmember Wapner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Valencia?
Yes.
Okay, so moving to order, uh that moves us to item number fifteen. This is the time and place for a public hearing to inquire about the formation of. City of Ontario Community Facilities District number fifty-seven, New House, and the levy of special taxes. In the Community Facilities District, Madam City Clerk, has notice of this hearing been given in accordance with the Millerus Community Facilities Act?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, notice of public hearing was published at least seven days prior to the opening of the hearing. As required by the Millerus Community Facilities Act.
Okay, before formally open the hearing, are there any written protests that will not be presented by the author of that protest at the hearing?
No, sir, we have no written protest.
All right, so you know, written protest, the hearing is now officially open, and we will. Receive comments, questions, and any oral protests from any interest interested persons. Are persons to speak on this matter? Madam City Clerk?
Not that I'm aware of, sir.
Okay. So you know, this time, we'll close the public hearing because there are zero persons registered to vote within the. Territory of the Community Facilities District, as certified by the Register of Voters. The vote shall be by the landowners of the Community Facilities District. As such, the landowner has waived the notice and election requirements in connection with the act, I will now consider action item A, B, and C, Madam City Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a resolution of the City Council approving the formation of City of Ontario Community Facilities District number fifty-seven, New House. Authorizing the levy special tax within the Community Facilities District. And establishing an appropriations limit of Community Facilities District and. Item B, this is a resolution of the City Council to incur bonded indebtedness. Within the City of Ontario Community Facilities District number fifty-seven, New House. And this is a resolution calling a special election for City of Ontario Communities Facilities District number fifty-seven.
Okay, do I have a motion on action items A, B, and C?
Oh, move.
Move by Member Bowman, second by Mayor Pro Tem Parada. I will, we will have a roll call on that, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Leon?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Dorst Parada?
Yes.
Councilmember Wapner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Valencia?
Yes.
So at this time, I'll ask the city clerk to open the ballot and announce the results of the election.
Ballot is in support.
Okay, the results of the election being in favor of the formation of the Community Facilities District, incurring bonded indebtedness. And the levy of special taxes and the establishment of the appropriate appropriations limit. We may now proceed with the remaining actions for the Community Facilities District and consider action item D, Madam City Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Ontario declaring the results of the special election and directing the recording of the notice of special tax leave.
Do I have a motion for action item D?
The item?
Moved by. Moved by Councilmember Bowman, second by Mayor Pro Tem Parada, we'll take a roll call vote, Madam City Clerk?
Mayor Leon?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Dorst Parada?
Yes.
Councilmember Wapner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Valencia?
Yes.
Action item D is passed, we may now proceed with the next action item this evening for the Community Facilities District and consider action item E, Madam City Clerk?
This is the introduction and waiver of. Further reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ontario, California, levying special taxes within the City of Ontario Communities Facilities District number fifty-seven, New House.
Do I have a motion for action item E?
I'll make that motion second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Bowman, second by Mayor Pro Tem Parada. Take a roll call vote, Madam City Clerk?
Mayor Leon?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Dorst Parada?
Yes.
Councilmember Wapner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Valencia?
Yes.
Action item E is passed, so we may now proceed with the final action item. For the Community Facilities District and consider the action item F, Madam City Clerk?
This is a resolution of the City Council of the Ontario of Ontario, authorizing the execution and delivery of an acquisition and funding agreements with. Ellis Ontario LLC.
Do I have a motion for action item F?
Make that motion.
Second.
A move by Mayor Pro Tem Parada, second by Councilmember Bowman, we'll take a roll call vote?
Yes, Ma- Mayor Leon?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Dorst Parada?
Yes.
Councilmember Wapner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Valencia?
Yes.
Action item F is passed, that concludes the proceedings. For this evening concerning the formation of City of Ontario Community Facilities District number fifty-seven, New House. All right. That brings us back to item number. What are we on, sixteen and seven?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, okay, good. Item number sixteen.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing to consider a Development Code Amendment proposing to revise current provisions regarding the regulation of accessory dwelling units. And rescind an urgency ordinance previously approved by the City Council on January twenty-first, two thousand twenty. Revise current downtown mixed-use zoning district provisions to facilitate the establishment of the downtown district plan. Establish provisions regulating the development of small lot infill subdivisions. Revise provisions regulating massage services and massage establishments. And establishing an administrative approval procedure for massage establishments. And adjust and clarify certain Development Code provisions within chapter two point zero of Administration and Procedures, Chapter three point zero. Non-conforming lots, land uses, structures and sites, and chapter five point zero. Zoning and land use, chapter six point zero, development and subdivision regulations, and chapter seven, historic preservation. Chapter eight, sign regulations, and chapter nine, definitions and glossary. Notice of public hearing has been duly given, affidavits of compliance are on file, there are no written communications, and I don't believe we have callers.
Okay, so I'll open the public hearing and let the record reflect that uh there are no written. Uh nothing written received, no callers to speak to, so um. At this time, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a discussion or motion from council.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, I'm sorry, sir, if I can't just for one clarification.
That I think uh was a a two typos that were caught by Mr. Wapner. And and if you want to bring them up, sir, by all means, if not, I would have Mr. Murphy uh make a few clarifications.
No, I was just gonna ask Scott to do that, that's fine.
Yeah, there was a uh. In the land use matrix, in the uh our current provisions prohibit. Uh medical uses that front onto Euclid Avenue within our downtown mixed-use area. Uh that was inadvertently struck out, which uh the implication of that would mean that it would now be permitted, so we need to correct that and make sure that the prohibition. Remains in effect. Uh for those frontages along Euclid Avenue, uh so we request that that change be incorporated. And uh also, there are provisions that speak to aquaculture. Uh which is basically farming uh of fish for food. Uh they had uh staff had included that originally in the provisions of our community gardens. Uh there's some concern that uh having that type of a more commercial or industrial use is probably not appropriate within the community garden. Uh it is certainly allowed within our industrial areas, and that's probably the best place to keep it. So we would request that the aquaculture provision be removed from the community garden.
So what if a restaurant had a? You know, fish there? And that prohibit that too? You know, when you walk in, you see a restaurant, they got fish in a in a, you know, an aquarium, and it's a pick that one.
Yeah, the difference gets down to they're displaying those versus raising them.
Okay. So um I'll entertain a motion with recommended corrections, correct? So Alan, you want to say you want to move your booth?
Yeah, on behalf of the fish, I'll move it.
I'll second.
Oh. Okay, so um uh it's been moved by Councilmember Wapner, second by uh Mayor Pro Tem Parada. We'll go for a roll call vote?
Yes, Mayor Leon?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Dorst Parada? Well, Councilmember Wapner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Valencia?
Yes.
So um. Item number seventeen.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing to receive testimony and adopt a consolidated annual performance. And evaluation report for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty fiscal year. Notice of public hearing has been duly given and affidavits of compliance are on file. We do not have written communications, and I do not believe we have callers.
You don't believe, Karen, do we have any callers?
No, sir, no callers for this item.
Okay, great, so uh I'll open the public hearing and let the record reflect that we don't have any written comments nor any callers, so I'll. Close the public hearing, I'll uh open up for a discussion or motion from the council.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Okay.
Second motion.
Okay, uh moved by uh Mayor Pro Tem Parada, second by Councilmember Bowman, uh we'll have a roll call.
Mayor Leon?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Dorst Parada?
Yes.
Councilmember Wapner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Valencia?
Yes.
That takes us to item number eighteen, Madam City Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing regarding the economic development subsidy report, a retention agreement between the City of Ontario. And Keno Motorsports LLC pursuant to Government Code Sections five, three, zero, eight, three. And consideration of a resolution accepting the economic development subsidy report approving the operating covenant agreement. And making related findings. Notice of public hearing has been duly given and affidavits of compliance are on file. We do not have written communications, and we do not have callers to the item.
So I'll open the public hearing, let the record reflect there are no uh written comments nor any callers, so I'll close the public hearing. And I will entertain a motion from council or conversation.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tem Parada, second by. The. Mr. Bowman? Roll call vote?
Mayor Leon?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Dorst Parada?
Yes.
Councilmember Wapner?
Sorry, I couldn't hear anything, yes.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Valencia?
Yes.
So moving to order. Uh that takes us to. Item nineteen, Administrative Reports and Discussion and Actions. So, Mr. City Manager, item number nineteen.
Yes, sir, uh this is the consideration of tow permits, the city staff. Uh put together a request for proposal process, uh six proposals were submitted, one was disqualified, five are. Brought before you, having been qualified uh by the staff, the in in grouped into three tiers. Uh the tiers should be reviewed as uh the the number one tier being most complete, the second tier. Uh being next most, a solid uh secondary uh submittal. And then the three tow carriers that are in the third tier were very similar for different reasons. Uh to one another, either the completeness of uh the the RFP. Or lack thereof, but still meeting the minimum standard. Uh some of the issues that came up in background, some of the issues that may have come up with facilities, but they were uh grouped uh accordingly. At this point, the staff recommendation is for council to award uh tow permits for any combination of these five. Uh tow carriers, if you have any specific questions, uh Chief Lorenz and Captain Birdnik are on the line as well.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Bowman?
I I'd like to make a uh a short speech and then a two-part motion, if I could. Uh first of all, with a COVID, uh. I've got to believe that the overall toes are down a bit because we don't have the stops like we used to, the. With the police department. Uh the other thing, as you recall, a few years back, we had. Had a some issues with the cab companies wanting to go to the airport and what have you. And it was, it got to a point where the saturation. Of the number of cab companies. Uh really reduced the bottom line for each one of those as far as profit, it was just too much. My thought would be. A good even distribution, which would be twenty-five percent of. Per carrier, the first, the first would be, let's go down to four, let's go down to four toes. And those four would be as follows. Certified towing. Fugleson Towing. Eppes Towing. And Deets Towing. And I'd like to throw that for a motion consideration.
Well, if that's your motion, I would I would have no problem entertaining a conversation about that motion or a second on that motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to let you know that we do have one caller to the item.
Okay, uh thank you very much for uh. Bringing that up, uh so let's hear the caller.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the caller. Go ahead.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name is Michael Armada. I'm the owner of Deets Towing, and I'm calling in to clarify a couple of the things on page five nineteen of the agenda. Uh page five nineteen under Deets Towing says that we were under lease. I just wanted to clarify, as of the proposal date, we were under a five-year lease. As of our inspection date, we were in escrow for the property. And as of October thirty-first, twenty uh twenty twenty, we are the owners of the property. Also on page five nineteen, it mentions that we're under new management, I did want to clarify, if I could, that we have the same management team that is in place, that has been in place for over twenty-five years. So as new owners, we kept our management team and the people that have been with the company for twenty-five years.
All right, thank you, Mr. Armada, appreciate you uh introducing yourself. So uh we'll move on, uh is there, are there any other callers?
Karen?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Wapner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, this is a tough one, and it's always tough because people's livelihoods are depending on our decision. Um I I did a lot of analysis in all of these, and if you don't mind, I'd kind of like to go through all of them in alphabetical order. And with my observations. I looked at Bill and Wags, Bill and Wags has been written up five times, suspended twice with the San Fernando County Sheriff's Department Rancher Division. Two complaints, one of which is one of their tow drivers getting involved in a road rage. Incident pointing a gun at the other driver, not the kind of tow company I would appreciate working in my city. My personal feeling, um. Second one, certified, nothing really in to look at, other than I want to commend them on using low emission trucks, I think that's something we need to move in that direction. Um Deets had five complaints. One problem was that they actually. One problem was that they actually, we had a car in evidence, and they sold it, which kind of makes it difficult to prosecute the case once they sell an evidence car. I've always had a concern about parking there. They use city streets to park a lot of folks. And then the other problem they had is they had an on-duty driver, not working for the city, but on duty, involved in a DUI where he crashed into six cars. I certainly would hope that our tow companies are doing drug and alcohol testing and making sure this doesn't happen, but that really concerns me. Fogel Songs, again, no complaints or suspension, so I'm good with them. Pepe's, the only concern I really had was their lease on their existing storage lot is expiring in twenty-two. So I could certainly support them with the condition that within the next two years, they they get a contract for another storage lot. So unfortunately, I can't support Mr. Bowman's motion. My, my, I don't even know if I had a second. My motion or my second, my my substitute motion would be for certified Fogel Songs and Pepe's with that condition.
That's three. Okay.
Yeah, I, I, not based on how many we need, but based on the fact that some of them just don't have good business practices.
I, I, Mr. Mayor, I would amend my motion to reflect the good councilman's comments. And with the three, certified Fogel Son and Peppes.
Okay, so Debbie, do you have anything to add?
No, I'm fine with that.
With your Valencia?
Yes, I do. I, as well, want to sort of take it down because from the existing what we had. And even at three or to two, because, you know, Mr. Bowman mentioned about COVID, obviously that took down a lot of toes. You know, we're not doing the amount of DUI checkpoints that we did. And several years ago, the laws changed where when people would be towed for a fourteen-six oh one or twelve-five hundred, which are suspended license or unlicensed drivers, the vehicles would be towed for thirty days. So therefore, there was a great need for to have these tow agencies that we did at the time. Now, it's, it's like feast and famine out there for these guys. So we need to make sure that either we go to, you know, two or three. I agree with Mr. Wapner, at least to go to three. But even if, if we can go down to two, that that might work as well, but I'd be happy with three as well.
Well, I personally, Debbie, are you still, are you, are you, did you have something to add or no?
No, I'm good with the three that Alan mentioned.
I think that the PD, I've, I've had conversations with PD in the past that the four makes it a good even rotation on a month, and each, each contract is for, you know, I mean, each company covers a week. And I think that four is adequate. I don't necessarily think we have to go down. As you heard, Mr. Armata called in himself and as the owner of Deets, but he's a new owner, like you said. It would be interesting to find out, Mr. Wapner, to satisfy your fears. If, if in fact, Mr. Mr. Armata's purchase of Deets. And let me just tell you too, is that I have not been satisfied with these for many, many, many years. And I was actually happy to hear that that they had changed ownership because I just didn't feel like they had served us well. And I'm not certain at this moment that the things that you discovered about Deets are, and maybe you can answer this, are related to the current, are the new owner in Mr. Armata, who also, I did, I did some checking up on, on all of the the tow companies and had looked in other cities and how they were doing. And I saw that they were doing pretty well in some of our surrounding cities, that is, the Mr. Armata's company. So I'm not so sure that we should go down to three. It makes it kind of hard to split up the month on the PD. But, you know, the council rules, I still think it should be four, just because of the, the change of ownership and simplicity of four versus three. I don't want to go down to two. I think that's excessive. But so we have Jimmy had a motion for four.
Yes, I, I have a standing motion for four.
I thought I heard you withdraw it.
He did. That's what I'm trying to, to, I'm trying to
I'll make a second for Wapner's motion.
Well, but Jim's, Jim's initial move for four was
But I made, I made a substitute motion, which overrules the first motion. Correct, Mr. City Attorney?
That, that is correct, Mr. Wapner. And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Bowman's original motion did not receive a second. So Mr. Wapner's motion.
What if I made a substitute motion back to four right now?
Then the council would debate that substitute motion.
Okay. And Alan, I'm, I'm good. You know, I don't just trust your research. I'm just wondering if it was up to date. That's all.
It was since he took over. It was, it was since he took over. I think, I think I'm pretty sure he's been there for three years.
I don't know. Would it be, I don't know if he's still on the phone. Would it be improper to ask him to come back and answer that question, Mr. Duran?
No, it would not, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Armata, Karen, is Mr. Armata still on the phone?
Yes, we will put him through now.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Armata, there's been some questions about that Councilmember Wapner brought up that that had brought us all to a concern about some of the history of your staff. Did you hear those comments made by Mr. Wapner?
There were a few that I heard, but I didn't hear all of them.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Wapner, would you like to restate so that he could answer?
According to our police department, one of our cars that were in evidence was sold by your company. We also had information that one of your drivers, while on duty, not for the police department, was involved in a DUI collision impacting six different vehicles. And then I personally had a concern about parking on the city streets, that that sometimes there's cars parked on the street. Well, my biggest concern is when you sell a car out of evidence, that that is devastating, depending on the crime. And any driver, again, I would hope you're doing drug and alcohol testing. But a driver to be involved in an on-duty accident in a tow truck damaging six vehicles is pretty drastic for me.
That being said, we've been, we've been the owners over there now for approximately one year. Drug and alcohol testing is in place, which is, is all across the company. As far as the evidence tow and the driver with the, the drunk driver, that was all prior to us owning the company.
Yeah, that was what I was thinking that it would. I, I knew that Mr. Armata was generally new and that some of the, the trepidation that you had, Mr. Wapner, was based upon the former owners. But I couldn't prove it because I didn't know.
But hasn't Mr. Armata been a business in the city for quite a while? Did he have a different company?
I don't think so. Did you, Mr. Armata?
Not in the city of Ontario, no.
Okay, when, when was that DUI? Because I actually was there, and it was it wasn't over a year ago. The, the truck, it was pretty horrific. The truck went into a, a building and took out some cars that were at a right, right off a halt. That, that wasn't over a year ago.
That was this year, sir.
That one was over. That driver was drug and alcohol tested and background checked. And he passed each and every background check and the drug screen as well. And from what I'm understanding, he was fired on the spot.
But he was driving well drunk?
As far as I'm, as far as, as far as I know, I believe yes. I'm not sure if it was drugs or if it was alcohol.
And that was how many months ago?
I'm trying to find out. Approximately about two months.
Okay, thank you.
So are you, Mr. Armata, I'm just asking, have you taken any steps to remedy that this kind of thing never, would never happen again?
Absolutely. Yes, like, again, my drivers are drug screened and alcohol tested upon hiring, and they are also subject to, to random.
Yeah, okay, well, I admit. All right, so we, in this, hang on the line and does anybody else have any questions to ask Mr. Armata? So I, I had a, we had a motion by Jim for four, a subsequent motion by Alan for two. I made a subsequent motion for four. Where do we stand in that?
I think Alan made a motion for three.
I made a motion for three.
And I made a second for Alan.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the last motion, which was a substitute motion, was yours for four, I believe it was, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, Mr. Bowman's second.
Okay, so I'm a second in that, so that would be appropriate to take a vote on that motion, Mr. Mayor. And then if it, if it passes, then that wins the day. If it does not, then I'm assuming Mr. Wapner would put his motion back on the table for three.
Okay. Change it to two. I'm not sure.
I'm sorry, what'd you say, Alan?
I said, I may, I may go back down to two, depending on what happens with this vote. I'm not sure. But it doesn't matter. Let's do the vote.
For the clarity of the record, Mr. Mayor, could the maker of the motion restate the four companies?
No, I'm going to take a recess right now. I need to go to the restroom. Let's take a break.
Okay, we'll recess for a few minutes, five minutes?
I don't know, I might recess for a week. We'll see.
You're the mayor, you're, you're, you're presiding over the meeting, so we'll, we'll come back when you come back.
The meeting will begin shortly.
Hello, everybody. Thank you. I needed to go wash my hands. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity for a break. Okay, so we're back and we're discussing the tow trucks. And we are in the process right now. There's been, I made a subsequent motion to accept four that were named by Mr. Bowman in the beginning. Mr. Bowman's second in that. And so if anybody would like to have any further discussion on it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Wapner.
Having heard what Mr. Ramada said, I didn't realize that he did not have the operation when, especially when the car had evidence was sold. And I'm sure he's making safeguards to make sure that doesn't happen again. I'm going to pull back my motion to put your motion on the floor. But I would appreciate it if, as part of the motion, you include the contingency, the condition I stated about requiring Pet Base to get a yard prior to, within the next two years. And secondly, that that Mr. Ramada assures that he's going to make sure, and he's doing what he needs to do. But I would go one step further and make sure that he has a supervisor on shift that actually talks to each driver to make sure they're not drunk at the time. As long as that understanding is part of your motion, I'll put mine off.
Okay, yeah, I'm, that's great. I'm sorry, I'm not laughing, other than that was a funny remark you made there. Truly funny. So, okay, so with the recommend, I'm so recommending the four. The second by Mr. Bowman. And with the caveats that were mentioned by Mr. Wapner, it remains, so we'll go with a vote. Madam City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Bowman.
I'd like to read into the record what those four would be. And that would be certified towing, Fogelson towing, Pepe's towing, and Deets towing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bowman. Thank you. So we'll move on to the roll call vote. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Leon?
Yes.
Mayor Pritam Doras Parada?
Yes.
Councilmember Wapner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Valencia?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. And then that moves us on to Staff Matters. Mr. City Manager?
Nothing tonight, sir.
And we'll take us to Council Matters, and I'll start with our Mayor Pro Tem Parada.
I'd like to build on what Deandre brought to us earlier. Well, this last Saturday, thirty-three volunteers came out to the youth that have immediate to help us pick up trash in those magnificent, magnificent pods that every caused everybody grief when they walked up and down the avenue. So thank you to the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts, Chaffey students, the junior ROTC for coming out and helping us get that done. We filled up seventy-five bags of stuff. So that was a really good thing. And I wanted to mention the museum. I know with COVID that everybody thinks that some of the different departments in City Hall have slowed down or shut down. But when it comes to the museum, we're going full force here. We have been on the road to accreditation. And it's been a wonderful journey. So many good things have been coming out of this. We should be fully accredited in twenty-twenty-one. And I'm looking forward to that. I just want to thank the museum staff for working really, really hard to make that happen. Once we get this accreditation, we'll be able to get even better exhibits than what we have now. So I'm really excited about that. So and last, but certainly not least, thank you to the Ontario residents for giving me another four years. I truly, truly appreciate it. So thank you very, very much.
Yeah, Ms. Parada, I wanted to congratulate all of the winners locally too, before we get too far. And I know that the votes are still getting tallied for many people. So it's not over till it's over, is it, really? So, and oh, by the way, and I'll probably just do mine now because I'm very excited about the fact that Victor Glover is in outer space. Kid who graduated from Ontario High School. Are we not all proud of that guy? And Alan, didn't Judy graduate from there too?
No, my kids all went to Chaffey.
But didn't you, I thought that Judy went to Ontario High. No?
No, she went to Alma. Her brother taught at Ontario.
That's what it was. That's what it was. So I know many, many people who worked there and Alex Espinoza's wife worked there for many years, probably Victor herself. Victor, we're just saying here from the City of Ontario that we're very, very proud of you. And maybe if we ever have a Fourth of July, we could get him to come here and we'll make a, oh, you know what? What we gotta do? We gotta get the little kid from down south who wanted the rocket ship in the park.
Oh, yeah.
And make the rocket and put him on a float for the Fourth of July.
Well, that would be fun. Yes.
Victor, the, you know, the, what do they call that, the grand marshal? Maybe if we ever have a Fourth of July, we could get him to come here and we'll make a, oh, you know what? What we gotta do? We gotta get the little kid from down south who wanted the rocket ship in the park.
Oh, yeah.
And make the rocket and put him on a float for the Fourth of July.
Well, that would be fun. Yes.
Victor, the, you know, the, what do they call that, the grand marshal? Little Grayson on with him. Anyway, okay, you know, I'm gonna just, that's just my chest thing going on. Mr. Bowman, Mr. Wapner, you're up, right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm kind of glad I'm not there because what I'm gonna say, Debbie probably kicked me under the dais there. I said this before and I'm very sincere, is that we certainly all recognize Debbie as being the heart of Ontario. So active in the community. She's done so much and she always has the city that mind. That's what's important about her. And I'm so happy that our friends and residents of Ontario also know that. I think everyone does. So Deb, I want to congratulate you on being the number one vote getter in this election. And it's only because of the diligence and the commitment you've made to this community. So thank you. Congratulations. And you can't kick me.
Mr. Bowman?
Oh, in light of the lateness, Your Honor, I'm going to pass. Thank you.
Is it late? It's only late for us, you know? It doesn't usually go this late.
I should have been about two hours ago.
I'm gonna add real quick that, you know, there are statements, folks, that are made during public comment. We can't respond. It's not legal. And I hope there's somebody still listening. And there are also comments that are made by people that, you know, have an opinion and it's theirs. And the reality is, if we look at the nation, it's split in half right now. I mean, you see that there are, you know, half the nation has an opinion, half the nation has another opinion. And it comes all the way down to the local, to the local scene. And to believe that we're not listening just because it doesn't reflect exactly how you think, it doesn't mean anything. It just means that, you know, there are always opposite or at least alternative thoughts out there. And I want to just maintain that ability to be open to all people and all thoughts in the city. Mr. Valencia, your turn.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to thank over twenty-six thousand voters that filled in that little circle so that I could be here for another four years. And to be your voice, to be your advocate, to stand up for you. You know, I'm sure a lot of you have witnessed a lot of stuff that's happened over the years and know that I'm here for you. And thank you very much for your trust. That's all.
All right, so we appreciate your interest and we thank you for participating in our meeting by television, live stream on the web or by calling in. Our next regular scheduled meeting will be on Tuesday, December 1st, 2020. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all for sticking with us.